Don't worry, we'll hear them. Hang on, there's still one more person.
Do you want to turn the record on?
I did, thank you.
Keep it coming, keep it coming. Okay. I'm just muting.
Okay. Forget it.
They're all in?
Everybody's in.
Okay. Special meeting of the North Smithfield Town Council, October 5th, 2020 is called to order at 6:47 PM. First item is the prayer and a pledge. Madam Clark?
Lord assist with thy holy spirit of counsel all of those who are serving in positions of authority and responsibility. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Baramioli?
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Present.
Here.
Mr. Zelinski?
Present.
Mr. Vatney?
Here.
Next item is the open forum pursuant to public law, 42-46-6D with a maximum of 15 minutes. Is there anyone out there wishing to speak under the open forum? If you do, please hit the raise your hand button or unmute yourself and let us know if you'd like to speak. Is there anybody early in this?
None that I can see.
Anybody out there wishing to speak under the open forum? Okay, then, moving on. All business, discussion by council voter other action on update on municipal building review task force. Discussion by council vote other action on town hall signage invoices. We have Graphic Designers Inc. invoice number 20207. Everybody should have a copy of it dated July 20th of 2020 and the amount of $7,163. That was for signage throughout the building. Both make it ADA compliant so you know where you're going and as well as directional. So people entering the building eventually when they get to enter the building will know where they're going. It's the recommendation of the task force that we approve both of these as was part of the overall project. Is there a motion to approve?
A motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Zelinski, seconded by Mrs. O'Hara.
Mr. President, I just want to make the motion clear if you don't mind.
That's fine.
Make the motion to approve Graphic Design Inc. I know you just said it, but the invoice 20207 that reflects a charge of $3,877 and another charge of $3,286 for a total of $7,163. That's the motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Zelinski, seconded by Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Any other discussion? There are none roll call vote?
Mrs. Baramioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Ms. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vatney?
Yes. Next is for Graphic Design Inc. invoice number 20230 dated September 23rd, 2020 and the amount of $697.50. Is there a motion to approve?
A motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Zelinski, seconded by Mrs. O'Hara and Mr. Ogier. Any discussion? There are none roll call vote?
Mrs. Baramioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vatney?
Yes. Next item, discussion by council voter other action on the purchase of playground tables and benches for the tight pot. Mr. Jesus?
Request for that to be removed. I didn't meet the deadline. Mr. Penagass is revisiting what is needed at the park and he will be proposing another option of, I think, a couple of items he's not going to purchase. So you can remove that from the agenda, please.
Mr. President, while we're on this item on the agenda, may I pose a question?
Yep. Right, Mr. Zelinski.
I see here that we have a GEM Recreation Grant, the amount of $53,440. Mr. Jesus, have we drawn down on any of that grant money yet?
No, not yet.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
But we've done, we've done projects out of this, haven't we?
Very little, a lot of it still in the process or have not been built or is ready to be paid until we pay it and I get the canceled checks. I can't draw down on it.
Thank you.
So we, we pay
We have it until December. I'm sorry?
We pay it first and then we draw down on it.
Yes, I send over all the documents. Yes.
Is this going to be rebid or are we just looking at it differently?
He's looking at it differently. I think he's going to remove some of the items and it's going to be less than 5,000 and he's going to get the three quotes option and go that way.
Okay.
Okay.
New business, discussion by vote or other action on scheduling public hearing for the abiding of Stony Drive. This is something that came before us, oh, three, four months ago maybe, when the Ashambo's attorney brought this to our attention. We forwarded to the planning board. The planning board has looked at it, they've given us a cover letter on it. That they are, they're in favor of it and so we need to schedule a public hearing on it. This needs to have three weeks of advertising before we can have a public hearing. So the earliest we could have a public hearing would be November 2nd.
And notice to the abudis, Mr. President.
Excuse me?
And, and notice to the abudis.
Right, that's part of the process.
Mr. President?
Mr. Uzowski?
Do we need this property to be assessed or value established? For this discussion?
I don't, I don't have, I don't know. I mean, we've, we've, this is not, this is what, the Third Street that we abandoned so far since, since in this council? And we, we haven't done that before, but maybe, maybe Mr. Kravitz has an answer to that, Tom?
Yeah, under the law, you can establish a value for the property. When this came up for Moore Avenue, it was found to be, that number in that case was found to be insignificant. Although this case is different, so it's totally up to the council. If you want to get, have me get a value, I would typically get it from the assessor based on the square footage of the property being acquired.
Would this, would this end up making, obviously, if you, if you look at all of the site plans that have been submitted, number one, somebody messed up at the beginning of this by putting the whole driveway in the public right of way. For whatever reason, how, how that happened. So obviously, we're looking to abandon this street to the Ashambo's favor. Because they need it, because they're trying to sell the house if I'm not mistaken and they can't sell it till we, till we go through this process. Obviously, it makes the land more valuable than just an open piece of land that no one's going to use that we're splitting. And he's getting the bulk of the land. He needs the bulk of the land, if I'm not mistaken from what I read. So I, I, like you, like, like, like you said, Tom, when we did the Moore Avenue, everyone was getting such a small piece because there were so many homeowners, this is really one person that's getting a good piece of land. You know, they're picking up what, 5,000 square feet of land almost? Or more than that?
So just to refresh my memory, Tom, when we did the Moore Avenue project, I think we accepted a current land survey as part of the remuneration for us. Is that right? Where they had a shed in the backyard or garage in the backyard. Is that, is that the property?
Yes.
Yeah, and I think the man was out of pocket. I can't recall. I'm going to just say maybe $5,000 or less to do a survey out there. So I think that was part of the town. We didn't charge him. We didn't establish a value for monetary coming to the town. We took the survey, if I believe, filing them.
Well, they have to file a survey anyway to do it.
Yeah.
So.
And I think it helped us update, didn't it? Give us more accurate? Or no?
You can't really say, I mean, the perimeter of the property lines in that case were the same with Moore Avenue. They just identified the paper street, which was Moore Avenue, and it got merged into the surrounding properties there.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Mr. President, if I might, one of my concerns is simply making sure that you have all of the information that you need to make a decision. And if there is anything that the council needs of the administration, I want to make sure that we know what it is so that when the public hearing is held, that you have all the, the needed information. Beyond that, on this one, I, I have, well, I think it's, it's very important to make sure that we don't, we make these decisions with consideration to precedent. There are many of these paper streets around the town that have been put in place or come to be, in some cases by intention, like in this development, that were part of, where, where I was part of the planning board when this was subdivided. And, and then other click cases, they're, they're just spaces between lots that, that, you know, are what they are. I, it's, I think it's important that the town have a track record of establishing how it does these things with consideration to value, because it could be very easy to be criticized that, hey, you did it for this person. Why didn't you do it for this one? The other piece here is that on this particular plat, there has been a lawsuit that was filed. And I don't know how it, it, it ultimately has been resolved or if it has been resolved over a transaction of one of these paper streets, if you will, or potential connector roads that were, were, were deeded or established as they are to make sure that, as Mo Bojett, who was the chair of the, the board back then, said so often, that we, we needed to establish a well-articulating road system. And as a board member at the time, early on, I didn't know what the heck he was talking about. But ultimately, what, you know, it really is, is making sure that we don't create all these spaces where there's only one way in and one way out. There's multiple ways to get through a, a development for both convenience and for emergency access. You know, we, we've had this discussion of late on the circumstances out with the Rankin Estates development, where should there be a connection over to the Nipsichuck Estate or the Rolling Acres nearby such that there's connectivity from Route 7 through North Smithfield right over to Log Road in North Smithfield? All of these things, these little pieces are parts of a puzzle that ultimately go together and work well. So there's that aspect of, of this too, that we, we have to be careful of with this one. Again, I don't know where that lawsuit ended up and I would hate, or not want for this to, to become a, an issue that, that is disappointing, I guess, along the way.
We get, could we have an appraisal done on that or get an assessment done on that before with three weeks' time? It only has to be done by the, by the, by the tax assessor?
We certainly can have it by the tax assessor, if you like, yes.
Mr. Igliozzi?
Yes, Mr. President.
Can, can you look into this lawsuit that's out there?
The, I can, I can ask, I can, I don't, I didn't know there was a lawsuit, but I, I did know that there's, there was two bodies trying to resolve ownership, right? I didn't know there was a lawsuit, but I'll find out. I can find out.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Zelinski?
Well, I'm not sure of this, but I, I, we have a, an email from a master sergeant, United States Air Force. I won't mention names. In his comment to Tom, our plan was, my commander looked over it and has no problem having it removed. I'm not sure that the United States Air Force or any military base grants that autonomy to the commander to waiver any access or potential access to a base. I, I think this is something we may want to look into. Tom, you have it there. It's, it was sent from the master sergeant on Friday, August 14th. And it's not from the commander, so this military, so it's kind of chain of commanding. I'm just not comfortable with the way this has been answered by the United States Air Force. So is there any way we can look into this to see if a commander of the base has the authority to grant the removal of paper access into a base?
I can look into seeing who's the appropriate chain of command of that organization to make sure you got the answer from the right person. That's basically what
Tom, if you could somewhat reword what I just said there, but as a council person, I have a concern that does the base commander have that authority and you can couch it in such a way so it's not, you know, you can be a little bit more politically correct about it. But I certainly, it says, it's a master sergeant given this from a verbal that the commander gave to the master sergeant. And my big question is, does the commander of the base have the authority to do this? Thanks, Tom.
Mr. Uzowski?
To that point, Mr. Vice President, the, you know, I think it's good that we have the input of the, the neighboring property owner, but it's really the town's interest that I'm most concerned with as it relates to how these, you know, cross plat connections might be able to develop in the future. We, we already have a, a guard base in town that is inactive and some wonder what will happen with it. The one that's along Pound Hill Road. You know, these, we look at them like they're there forever and in many ways, you know, I have no problem with that and hope it is the case. But should it be that they were to vacate that base and the, that property be developed in its current zone? It would be, you know, more housing at the end of Oxford Road, which is one way in, one way out. Where this circumstance affords additional ways in and ways out to a, a large piece of, of acreage in the town. So I, I encourage that we do make sure that we know what the neighbors have in mind. But I think ultimately, it really is an important decision for you, the council, to make with eyes, eyes wide open.
Yeah, Gary, I, I agree with you that certainly, I'm looking out for the best interests of the town, the abutting neighbors, but I'm also concerned, I want to go back to the United States Air Force, but if they're, if the base commander has that authority to do it. Secondly, if the base were beat, to be abandoned, and Gary, I don't know, it was way back around 2000. I, I served on a committee, I think you may have been on that committee, in which we were, at the time, the Nike site, the Upper Nike Site, as they refer to it, was going to be abandoned. And host communities of where military bases get abandoned have the opportunity to acquire these properties. So in the back of my mind, I want to keep that there about the articulated road system that Mo Bojett was a big proponent on. And I was fortunate enough to serve on a planning board with Mr. Bojett. So, yeah, I, I, I'm not in a rush right now at this point. I am not in a rush to remove the paper road and until we head back from the United States Air Force. But going back to your housing that you mentioned up there, up on Oxford Road, hopefully, the United States Air Force would bring the town of North Smithfield back into any negotiation for that property. We can only hope.
So that leads me to the, the original question is, do we have a public hearing in three weeks to at least get the process started?
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Well, we need, it needs, it, it, it needs to be three weeks. That's the earliest we could do it is the 2nd of November.
Sure. Are you looking for a motion to those November 2nd for a public hearing?
Motion by Mrs. Zelinski, second by Mrs. Baramioli. Any other discussion? Mr. Scott will schedule that for November 2nd. You can do all the advertising that you need to.
Yes, sir.
Igliozzi will do his homework as far as the lawsuit and Mr. Kravitz and Mr. Uzowski will follow up on, on their end of things as well. Thank you. Roll call vote?
Mrs. Baramioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vatney?
Yes. Next item, discussion by council voter other action on zoning amendment, section 6.19, water supply protection overlay district. First reading and scheduled public hearing date. Mr. Kravitz?
Yes, for this, this zoning amendment, you should have my memo dated September 9th, I believe.
We do.
Where we pretty much explained what the changes are, how they're consistent with the comp plan and what needs to be done, state law to, to move such an item. The long and short of it, the simple story is when we looked at the, the map that accompanies the text of this ordinance, Bobby, GIS specialist in the office, did a good job of making the map a little more clear, particularly the surface shrinking water supply area known as Crookfall Brook. This came up a couple times with different projects. North Smithfield Auto and, and the big solar array there by Green, the one Green's doing. And we wanted to graphically adjust this map so it's more clear where that district applies geographically. So she's made that change. And the other change that she made that would be considered significant for the ordinance is we've come up with a, an exemption list of properties for existing industrial areas whereby groundwater has historically already been impacted. They have this still opportunity to optimize industrial and commercial development. And namely, I'm speaking along Industrial Drive all the way east on the other side of 146 to Branch Village. If you recall, your comprehensive plan is, is got an aggressive land use program with mixed uses for Branch Village. So to carve that little area out of the ordinance might help to spur growth in that, in that particular area. So those are the two major changes. And I gave you a copy of the ordinance with the track changes on, so you can see exactly what's being deleted, what's being added. The only other minor change that we did make, on page 636, we've added specific notifications for Crookfall Brook to the city of One Socket, town of Lincoln, Smithfield, all the towns that, which this watershed applies. So that's more clear in the ordinance too. And the one last thing is, it's a minor one, but it, it really is, and on page 639, we're changing a, a shall to a may there. And the reason we're doing that is because the zoning board, oftentimes applicants come to the planning board first. They get their advisory opinion and then they go to zoning. We're trying to avoid getting in a situation where the zoning board is kicking stuff back to the planning board. So to give the zoning board that option, you know, to give them the, the flexibility to do that is what we're trying to add, add to that section there. With that, I mean, if you had any questions on the memo or the approach, feel free.
The list of properties, Tom, is not included in this though, is it?
The
No.
There's not a property listing, but I can make one.
Well, I was just, but it shouldn't be in the ordinance anyways. It, it just, there's, there's a list that it exists. Shouldn't be in the ordinance per se, should it?
Well, and the overlay zone map actually calls the properties out. It highlights each individual property.
Right.
You know?
And this too needs three weeks of notice.
Correct.
Visiting, so the earliest we could have a public hearing on this, this would constitute first reading, correct, Tom?
Right.
And then we got to have a public hearing, the earliest we could have that is November 2nd as well. There are motion to
A public, Mr. President. Motion to put this on for me, public, public hearing on November 2nd.
Public hearing and second reading?
Yes.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Zelinski, seconded by Mrs. Baramioli. Discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Baramioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vatney?
Yes. Next item, discussion by council voter other action on town ordinance, section 6-3C, historic preservation, tax deferment and waiver ordinance. Mr. Kravitz again?
Yeah, this has come to the planning board by way of the council. It came to the council, if you remember, through Chairman of the Historic District Commission, Mr. Jeff Harris. And Richard Keen was involved as well. I didn't have much input in the formulation except for edits to it when it first got to you as a council. I did bring it back to the planning board for study and they did, they did recommend that it go to the council for approval. Their vote was a 5-0 in favor. You should have a memo from me dated September 22nd. This is really, it's up to the council, you know, this is being a tax ordinance. The council, of course, has executive authority here as to how it wants to deal with this. The only, I think the question the planning board had was whether or not they should be involved in the creation of the rules that would accompany this type of program. And for the public, I should mention, what this is, is for properties that are either in a historic district or could be placed on the national register to be eligible as historic properties, they're, they're asking that they be placed in a special, a tax deferment or a waiver status to allow property owners, if they need to, to focus more resources on the properties themselves in terms of the, the financial effort it takes to keep them up, whether it's an old barn or, you know, old homes. So that's the, that's the theory here.
It's an effort to, to encourage rehabilitation as opposed to demolition and reconstruction of something newer.
Right.
And, and it's, and it's either, it, and it could either be deferred or it can be waived eventually. But if you read through this, there's, there's quite a list of criteria that they have to meet in order to be eligible for it. And then in order to have it deferred or have it waived, it, it's, it's pretty detailed in what they need to go through. And there's also a limit on the amount of money that the council can put into that program on a yearly basis. It's capped at $25,000 so that everyone is aware. So this only needs, this can go to a public hearing on our next meeting and only needs to be advertised for one week. And then, so we can actually have a, a hearing on this one on the 19th of October. So this would constitute first reading and then we have to schedule a public hearing. So we can schedule it for October 19th. Council's amenable to it. Mr. Uzowski?
Just to inject a, a thought for the council to consider as it, as it looks forward with this. I don't, I mean, I've gone through this. I, I hope I haven't missed it, but I, I don't recall seeing any kind of a, an income qualification for this. And it appears to me that any property owner with a building that meets these criteria could qualify for this without regard to income. And I, you know, just put that out there that that's what I perceive and wonder if, if that is the, the, the best way for this to go forward or to, to make sure you're aware that that is what would be going forward.
We can, we could add that at second reading though. Correct, Mr. Igliozzi?
During the, Mr. President, I'm sorry, I was muted. During the public hearing, it can be amended with any, any amendments at that time.
Okay, so we can, we can address it, but it's something, it's a good point to keep in mind that an income qualifier. Mrs. Baramioli?
No, I agree.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President?
Mr. Kravitz?
If I, if I might just say, not to put data on the spot, but to get them thinking about this by the time the hearing comes. If you look at section H, it's line number 132, the appeal process, I want to make sure that that's If you look at section H, it's line number 132, the appeal process, I want to make sure that that's structured the right way. There's, this ordinance of, it's coming out of tax, it's a tax ordinance, but it speaks very much to the zoning board as well, because it's talking about the H D C, which is a zoning matter. So I just want to make sure that that's written the right way in terms of the appeal possibilities, if you will. You know, I wouldn't want the ordinance to be found invalid because of the way it's formatted, but I tried to separate the two and clearly say that all matters, all tax matters, you know, shall be appealed to the tax assessor in accordance with that statute. And of course, if the matter, i- if there is a matter that's a zoning matter related to the H D C, it should be appealed according to the zoning appeal process. Just throwing that out there, if someone wants to digest that for the next, next month.
Tom, when you, when you talked about the planning board wondering if they should have more input in this, as you read through it, the Historic District Commission has a lot of, they're the ones that make a lot of the approvals and the recommendations and evaluations throughout the process. And do you think that that's, that's a good thing or a bad, or should it be the planning board? I mean,
No, the, the planning board.
Appointed board, it's another appointed board that, they're kind of the ones that, that were kind of in favor of this, because they've seen some of these buildings go by the wayside. And so they're the ones that kind of brought it to us. And this is, this is really what they do. This is, you know, this is what their, their forte is. Not that the planning board can't do it, but I personally didn't see an issue with, with the Historic District Commission, because it's another appointed board of ours that, that's overseeing this, and it, and it relates directly to historic district buildings or buildings on the National, you know, Register, which, which they control pretty much.
Right, the expertise lies with the H D C. Lines 72 and 73 talk about the process and the standards. They're going to simply adhere to the Secretary of Interior standards for historic rehabilitation. So that's how the H D C creates their rules to run their program to receive applications. That's something that, that's up to them, right? They have the expertise. If, if they were to throw it to the planning board, we're just going to make sure that if we read it from the perspective of an applicant, it's easy, it's an easy process to navigate, it makes sense, it's not redundant. You know, I'm all about trying to make things just the straightest line. What, what's, you know what I mean? So
Yeah.
About all we can bring to the table there.
Anyone else in the council? I'd look for a motion then to schedule this for October 19th.
A motion to schedule this, Mr. President, on October 19th.
Motion by Mrs. Zelinski, second by Mrs. Baramioli. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Baramioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vatney?
Yes. Mr. Iglesias, you will review it all to make sure it is in proper form, correct?
Mr. President, I'm going to check that, that ordinance in more detail as it relates to the stat, this, the, the enabling legislation. I'll make sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item, discussion by council, vote or other action on Center for Tech and Civic Life Grant for the general election. You want to address this as the clerk? Or do you, the administrator to?
It's up to him.
You, you sort it. Go ahead. You did the work. It's yours.
Um, the federal government has put out a grant for cities and towns to help out with the gen, extra expenses for the general election regarding COVID and all the P P E and other things, extra staffing and everything that we may need. So we applied to see what we would get, and it's actually based off of our budget for the year, as well as how many active voters we have. So we were approved for $5,000. We're going to use that to get, we're going to have two poll workers working for early voting to help people pop us out, and a couple of other different things around. We need a new printer and such things like that for the general election as well.
I'll only add that because it is an agreement, I recommend that it be put before the council for authorization to sign. Obviously, they're going to send us money. I want to sign it.
Is there a motion to, to accept the grant and authorize the administrator to sign?
A move, Mr. President, yes.
Motion by Mrs. Zelinski, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara and Mrs. Baramioli. Just on the discussion, it's, it's, it's good work by the clerk and the deputy clerk chasing after this. It's going to work out well. And just so, while, while we're talking about this, and what it's going to help us do is people need to know what's coming up in the next 30 days. Mail ballots need to be submitted before the 13th of October at 4:00 PM. Do you want a mail ballot? Early voting will begin on October 14th, which is what this grant is going to address till the 2nd. Obviously, the general election, you can go vote in person on November 3rd. We've used all of these in the, in the primary. They worked well. I tried them all. They all worked good. I voted early. I mailed ballot. I voted the day of the election. It all works good. There were no problems.
Wait a minute, what do you say?
Wait.
I just, I just want to add one quick thing, just so the public is aware, if you do apply for a mail-in ballot, you are not eligible to vote early. You can still vote in person, but only on election day at your polling place by a provisional ballot. So there's no confusion.
Good clarification, and so people know that they get a mail, because isn't, the Secretary of State is mailing out a mail ballot to everybody, correct?
No.
They're not doing that now?
No. This is where people get confused, and this is why we're getting a lot of phone calls. The Secretary of State's office sent out mail ballot applications to every eligible voter. You need to fill out an application for every election. Just because you did one for the primary does not mean it's done for the general election.
Correct.
Mail ballots themselves actually are being, starting to be sent out today, I believe. So voters should start getting them towards the end of the week. Um, it's also worthy to note that we do have a Dropbox at Town Hall available 24 hours a day to drop off your ballots or applications. It is a locked box. Nobody can get in it. Nobody can tamper with it.
So there's really no reason that people shouldn't be voting?
Correct. And if you're afraid of the mail, it does not have to touch the mail. You can drop it off on the Dropbox.
Any other discussion? Motion to accept and authorize the administrator to sign it?
A move, Mr. President, yes.
And seconding.
Yeah.
It's already been done. We're at the roll call vote now.
Mrs. Baramioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vatney?
Yes.
Nice job, Tom Clerk's office.
Good job.
It took you guys, you know, it took you guys a minute to catch on that I was voting all those times.
I know you just, but don't.
That's what they all say.
Vote early, vote often. Isn't that what they say?
That's right.
There are motion to adjourn?
A move.
Motion by Mrs. O'Hara, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Baramioli. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Baramioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Vatney?
Yes.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.